Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for April 21st, 2015. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Colin McNabb present.
And Sue Lysio present. We've got to note that Ms. Smart will not be able to make it tonight. Could you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that this meeting is being taped recorded and Chairman's additions or deletions. Andy?
Nope, nothing.
Town Administrator Updates and Reports.
Just a couple of quick items, Sue. Just a reminder for people that the annual town election is next Monday, the 27th. Voting will be here at Town Hall from 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night. And the following Tuesday, May 5th, is the annual town meeting. That will be over at the North Middlesex Regional High School. Change of venue this year. That starts at 7:00 o'clock again on May 5th. So for people who don't come all the time to the town meeting or haven't come for a while, it's an opportunity to participate in discussions about how we spend your money. We do the budget and more than half of the town meeting will be devoted to financial matters. We'll be talking about a new fire station in West Townsend, a number of other important items for residents to participate in. And speaking of fire stations, the station, the headquarters station over on Elm Street is down. That demolition finished on that a little over a week ago. And you'd never know that there had been a building there. Doing some site work now. They'll be pulling a foundation permit in the next week or two, by the sounds of it. Nice to see progress.
Nice.
That's all I got.
Oh, and six. Board of Selectmen's Updates and Reports.
I've got a couple things. It's kind of, the town clerk asked me to read something and it's going to basically be the same thing Andy said, but I am a man of my word. The annual town election is Monday, April 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And there is still time to get absentee ballots if you're not going to be in town from those hours. The town meeting is going to be held at North Middlesex Regional High School at 7:00 p.m. on May 5th. And the fines for dog licenses begin on Friday, May 1st. The fine is $25 plus a late fee of $10 and the cost of the license. Another thing, I wanted to give my condolences to the family of Ruth Mackey. Ruth died a few days ago at the age of 95. She was a good, really dear family friend of mine and many people in town. And I, you know, wish her family all the best.
Thank you. And I have nothing. One, seven. Approval of Meeting Minutes from March 19th, 2015.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes from March 19th, 2015.
And I'll second that. Moved and seconded. Any questions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two point one. 6:15 appointment. Do you mind if we go now? Okay. We have pavement management plan by Beta Engineering. They're here to present the pavement management plan they've been working on. I'm going to back up a bit.
Does everybody see that? It looks good. Thank you for having me in tonight. For the last couple of months, we've been working with Ed. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Barry LaRiviere. I'm with Beta Group Inc. I'm the Senior Project Analyst for Beta. We've been working with Ed for the last couple of months on a pavement management program. Basically, I want to take you through the program tonight and kind of give you an overview of our program and the summary of our findings. Now, you all have a packet that kind of falls along with our PowerPoint, so you can follow along with me. So the idea of a pavement management program allows you to analyze and prioritize your roadways in town. And the whole point of it is just doing the right repair at the right time. I have to pull, put a little theory in here. So this is our standard pavement management curve. Now, the idea is of the program is to keep your good roads good without letting them fall to the point where it costs too much money to maintain. Here's a couple, a couple of the standard pavement managing repair practices that we might, that we will be discussing. We have crack seal, pothole utility patching, chip seal, micro-surfacing, hot-in-place, milling overlay, reclamation reconstruction. If you have any questions as we're going along, feel free to stop me or you can wait to the end.
So?
Sure.
What's some micro-surfacing?
Micro-surfacing. So basically, it's a slurry-type seal. They get sealed over the top of a roadway, so you go and crack seal your roadway, and then it's a small surface treatment that goes down on the road after that. It's an interesting process. It's a preservation process. So after, maybe Ed's done a crack seal on a road instead of doing a level and overlay or something of that kind, you can come in and do a micro-surfacing.
Kind of on the same thing as if you, somebody seals their driveway.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Without the stone in it, you know, the overlay.
And there's different levels of it and there's no different applications for it as well. So our scope of the work for this project was to do the pavement management program. I'm going to take you through our process. So we start with a roadway inventory and GIS mapping. So what we do is we grab the Mass DOT Road Center Line file. We use that as the basis for our project. Coordinate with Ed on his knowledge of town streets, and we put the two together to come up with our basis for the network for the system. After that, we go into our field inspection program. I have a crew of inspectors that go out and visually drive every road in town, rate all the distresses and crackings that they see. Then we do an existing condition summary, which is a series of reports that analyze the data in different ways. Gave those to Ed so he could look at it. Then we get into the capital improvement planning. So we worked with Ed to look at the roadways and come up with a process of rating and ranking the roadways to see which ones should be prioritized over the other ones. Then ultimately, it's the system maintenance of the program. It's maintaining the program through time, updating what's going on. So here's an example of the roadway network. So we did, we used the DOT Road Center Line files. So we came up with a, right now, your Chapter 90 funding has you down to 87 miles a road. We did our analysis. We came in at 85. We typically find a discrepancy between town records and state records. This is how it works out. You have a little bit more than two miles of unaccepted roadway, six miles of state, a little bit under three miles of private, for a total of 96 roadway miles, which is always interesting because every town, we've seen the work and things they have, like, "Oh, we have 180 miles of roadway." And then we get into the nuts and bolts of it and find it's usually a lot less. So this is a example of our program interface. Now, our software is a non-proprietary MS Access-driven program. It ties into GIS and Access. So if you're a great GIS user, you can use all the functionalities of GIS. If you're not, you can use the forms and the entry panels in Access to enter the data into the system.
What's GIS?
Geographic Information Systems. I have a map and stuff. I'll bring that up when we're done with this, so you can take a look at that. So it allows us to not only have reports in your hand that show you the documentation of the roadway, now you can make a map. So we can color-code the roadway so you can see your bad roads versus your good roads. It allows you another way to visually look at what's going on in your community. Now, you might have heard PCI, Pavement Commission Index. Our program, we refer to it as a road surface rating. Worst road is zero, best road is 100. And we use industry standards that have been proven throughout our experience and also through the engineering industry. So each road, let me go back. So we visually go out, look at each road. We look at the distresses. We give a severity to that distress, and then we give it an extent, which would be the percentage of the roadway that would have that distress. So we look at things like edge cracking, linear cracking, potholes, patching. All those numbers get put together to generate a score or the RSR for the roadway. So this is a typical repair band spread that we have. So defer maintenance is the top, crack seal, surface treatments, milling overlays, and reclamation. So this is actually the spread of your community. Our program allows Ed to go at any time he wants to and adjust the costs. So the program is not static. It's always live. It can be changing at any time. So here is basically the big thing that you want to know. So we rated all the individual roadways. Now we have to come up with a road surface rating for the whole town, which ended up being a 59.42. So we looked at 80.73 miles of paved road, and our RSR rating is a 59.42. You can see a majority of your roads fell into that reclamation category. Not many in crack seal, not many in defer. And actually, to put a perspective on that, we always like to do pictures of the roadways so you can get a feeling for what things look like. So Linden Street came in at a seven, Ryan at a 29. So Terrace Way is a 56. So that's about what your average roadways look like within the community.
That's rather depressing.
Tough winter.
When did you do this? This is before the winter?
We did this in August. Yes, we did this in August.
It's probably gone down.
Our program actually has natural occurring deduct values. So on the anniversary of the inspection, the roads are always falling. Ed can go in and adjust the roadways. We had a bad winter. This road has bad potholes. We can adjust that accordingly as well. So Greeley's a 76, Hayes is an 82, Emery is a 99. So it would have been 100 were we inspected it, but it's been falling, so now we're at the point that it's actually dropped a couple of points.
Ed, didn't you just do that one?
Yeah, but it's not, he didn't go out there and find problems. It's just because the program, over time, will...
Automatically default. So we inspected it in August. Here we are eight months later. There's a deduct value going on, so the roads are always falling. If the roads were always 100, why even have the program? So everything looks good.
And Ed, how many years has it been since the Chapter 90 money has been withheld, the full amount? Two, is it two years?
Yeah. From the governor's matrix to three?
Well, I have some information in here, the slides that might help wrap our heads around that a little bit.
Yeah, I'm just trying, because I mean, it's not, this isn't a problem that's necessarily totally within our hands. It's the fact that the state's been withholding the money that we need to actually repair the roads.
That we found it on, at least, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a couple of good slides in there. I think that'll visually show you really what's going on. So unfortunately, what we have to come up with is your backlog to say if we go out and fix all the roads right now, and this is just paving curb-to-curb, not adjusting your drainage or sidewalks or ramp, they're about $16 million.
A little bit, yes.
We have the list of projects that Ed did in 2014. So the 3.7 miles of your accepted roadway network got repaired. Your biggest problem is, is your roads fall in that reclamation category, so it's a lot of money. So even though you're putting money into it, you're not getting a lot done because it takes a lot of money to do those roadways.
Just kind of what you've been saying for some time.
For a long time.
So then we get into the CIP development, which is a capital improvement plan. So this is, we sit down with Ed and look at budget requirements, now look at repair methods, prioritization strategies, you know, courting utilities, and all that information to pull together the capital plan. Now, this is the slide that I was kind of talking about. I think it'll really enlighten you as to what's going on. So your baseline RSR is a 59.42. So if you spend $300,000 a year for the next five years, you can see you're going to be on a decline. Your Chapter 90 allotment right now is $420,000. So that brings you up a little bit, but you're still trending where you're falling off. You can see when you start investing money, your rating's going to increase over time. So if you start, $600,000 will bring you up, $700,000, $750,000 will bring you even higher. So it gives you an idea. I mean, ideally, you'd probably, you're in the million, million-two range even to get your roads up above 60 to a 65. And again, this is just paving. It's not any drainage work, sidewalks, curbs, or anything else. So this kind of tells the story of where we're at right now. The other thing that we have in the program is, is we have a cost-benefit value. It's actually a priority ranking aspect that's already in the program. So we look at functional classification of a roadway, ADT, life of improvement, and it generates, what we say, it's your top 10 list. I like to call this, this is your biggest bang for the buck. So if you had to go out and spend, you know, $3 million, you're getting your biggest bang for your buck by doing these roads. But you can see a majority of them are reclamation. There's not a lot in that surface treatment, which is a lower-cost repair method. Milling overlays are a little bit cheaper than reclamation. So you can see you have a lot of roadwork in that reclamation range. And then, as I'm getting close to wrapping it up, the nice part of this program, it's user-friendly, easy to use. Ed paves a new roadway, you can go into the program, adjust everything that's been done, and the program will keep running on time. He's got us on hook for 12 months, so we're here to support him no matter what's going on. A couple of the next steps we might want to look at is, you know, determining funding levels. You know, do we, do we see a need for an increase to raise the RSR? Does the town say, hey, you know, a 59 isn't good enough? Maybe we want to be at a higher level. What will it take to do that? We can help you identify funding sources, you know, a three-year plan, five-year plan. I've, some towns do a 10-year plan, but to me, that's a little scary. You know, three years is tough enough, especially with the economics, everything going on right now. And then, let me just hop out for a second. Just give my computer a minute to think it. I'll show you the GIS component of the program. So not only did the town get a pavement management program as part of this, but we also helped basically make your GIS a little bit more robust. And as part of the pavement manager project, Ed and I were able to work out, we did a stormwater inventory, too. So while we were driving around looking at your roadways, we decided we were going to help them out by locating all your catch basins. So now with the new MS4 stuff coming down, you already have, you know, a foothold in the door where you know where your catch basins are. And if you want to proceed with mapping the rest of the system, that's already in place for you as well. Because we just look at it. It's another asset of a roadway. We can grab that while we're out there as well.
It's the most important, actually, when you think about it, because that's what causes the most damage.
Yep, absolutely. And let's give my dinosaur a minute to think here, and we'll get it up and running.
Barry, while we're waiting for that, can you just talk briefly about what reclamation is for people, people at home that don't know the...
Reclamation, so you're actually, I know you saw Great Road. Great Road's all torn up right now. Well, that's a milling overlay. They've milled the top inch and a half of material down, and then they're going to repave it, they're going to build it back up. A reclamation is we're actually taking it all the way down to the base of the roadway. Because a lot of your issues in town are drainage issues. So it's a bad base that's affecting the roadway. So we've got to rip all that up, put a new base down, and then rebuild the roadway all over again.
So the issue that we have with the base, the drainage issue, is if we come along and just do the milling, it's going to just end up the same.
It'll buy you some time, yes.
And the unfortunate part of these little towns, most of these roads were, there wasn't any serious sub, subsoil work done. It was just, everything was just put over the top. And so no matter what was underneath it, subgrade, that's what it was. And, you know, we have a lot of roads that are like that. We, as with, you know, planning board is, having new roads developed, we get away from that. If you look at Madison Ave., they had to remove four feet of muck in order to get, you know, down to good soil and replace it with all of that. But it's, you know, for us to go out there and do anything, even drainage, because most of these roads don't have areas for drainage. And if you start wanting to put in the systems that will collect the water, it's just, I mean, we can't keep up with what our roads are now.
I mean, the biggest problem, like I was saying, is a lot of these roads, cart paths, log roads, things that people have used for years. My town's the same animal. They started paving these roads, and, you know, back then, they didn't assume that all the traffic is going to get now. So it's just, you know, it's a bad base, bad material on the roadway. So here's an example of the GIS interface. I know the colors look a little squirrely coming out. They actually look really good on my laptop, but, so you can actually go in and with the reports that are in the program, actually visually see the ratings of the roadway. So red would be the worst, dark blue would be the best. So the roads that were recently paved will show up as the dark blue. You have your milling overlay, your surface treatment, and your crack seal. Your crack seal is that preventative maintenance category. So any roads that were paved this year, probably three to four years, Ed's going to go out and do a crack seal on them, prolong their life. Surface treatments, there's things like chip seal, levels and overlays, there's other type of things that will prolong the life of the roadways, too. So that goes back to that point of keeping your good roads good. So spending your money on your crack seal and on those surface treatments will keep you from having all these reclamation roadways that you're looking at. So as part of the program, too, we actually can show you where all the sidewalks are located within town. Not a lot. Down there, we also picked up striping, curb. So there's a whole host of information that we gather when we're out there. So as part of the final project, Ed will have this GIS on his computer, he'll have the Nice Access database, so he can see everything all in front of him. And then we, I'll just kind of show you the, so you can turn on your catch basins. I'll turn off the pavement. And then you can see where your catch basin locations are. And with the GIS, it allows you to actually open up the information and view it in a tabular format. So we have 790 catch basins that we found in town. So it's a powerful tool that allows you, you know, just to have the flexibility to analyze and prioritize your, you know, your roadway projects.
You mentioned identifying funding sources, besides local and the state.
Yeah, that's always a good one. Right?
What other ideas might you have?
I mean, we've been created, creative in some things. I mean, unfortunately, you know, it's, I don't think you're very, you don't have the sewer, a lot of sewer in town. You don't have the water, so you can't identify those, you know, those avenues. We've done some community block grant development stuff, where we've been able to pave roads through that. I hate to say it, but, you know, there's always overrides and things like that. A lot of towns have gone, too, just to try to get up their, you know, get up their paving. My town's doing it, too, and I'm, you know, I'm screaming about it. My taxes are going to go up, but this is what I do for a living. I understand the aspects of it, but it's tough. It looks like you got a little bit more Chapter 90 money this year, which is pretty good.
How much are we going to get this year?
About 420?
Yeah, plus the extra 100 million that you had from January, which added another 200. But, you know, you've got to remember that a basic road, a mile, if you have to reclaim a mile of road that's 24 feet wide, you're looking at $300,000.
Yeah.
So even at 600,000, yeah, you know, we'd all like to have 600,000, but that's two miles of road out of, you know, how many of that were reclamation.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
And that's not counting the roads that we should be crack sealing every other year to make sure, and even, you know, a road like, you know, Fitchburg Road, which was, I want to say back in, like, 90, 2000, when it was done, and there are areas that are falling apart already because there isn't much we can do. I mean, it's definitely the base out there in those areas, but, you know, we haven't done anything to that. Look at North End Road, that was, that was another, was reclaimed and paved around 2000, and that road is, that's all high water table out there, so there isn't much you can do. But that just shows you what, what water can do that sits pretty close to the top of the road.
That's also a cut-over road, though, for commuters.
Yeah, but if a road had a good base, you wouldn't see like that, like that. That's all subgrade issues and water issues. It's a very high-water table up there.
So you kind of pay, in the long run, for not doing it correctly when you start off. It's good that, I mean, what you said is that the new roads, as they're happening, are done.
Right. But like Barry stated, that, you know, people didn't see the amount of traffic you're going to see on roads, so the base didn't matter.
The base didn't matter.
You had, you know, cars that probably might have what they weigh now, no trucks. You know, not to be a lot of trucks going through our side roads, but, you know, even six-wheelers, 10-wheel dump trucks. You know, if you've got a bad base, they're not going to hold up. And then, like all of us, you get the frost. And the minute you get a crack in the road, you're, could be in a lot of trouble if that water infiltrates that crack during the winter.
I mean, that's your toughest point. You've got 35 miles of road that are reclamation or the highest, the most costly to repair.
How does Townsend compare to other area towns?
I can say, our average, we've been basically, so we go from Kittery, Maine, down to Connecticut, do a ton of work in the Worcester County area, so I'll kind of compare it to that. The average is about a 70. So that's about the average. The more you go towards Metro Boston, you know, those communities get higher Chapter 90 funding, so their roads are going to be higher. I've got Townsend in the southern part of, you know, the Worcester area. They're about the same as you guys are. It's more of these smaller rural communities that don't have the funding and have the old cart paths for their roadways that are now fighting the battle of, you know, of what are we going to do?
Okay. So how comfortable are you feeling with the system itself? You had your hands on it?
A little bit, but we, we haven't prepared, we've done anything because we want to make sure, I mean, everything's been a draft.
Yep.
So as soon as we get through this, we'll, we'll start, you know, making sure everything's a final copy.
Yeah, we'll come in for the installation and we'll do a training. We'll install it wherever you guys would like it.
Do you supply manuals and that sort?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yep, we have a field manual that we give you, because our thought is, is we like to see towns do re-inspections every three to four years. That way, it just keeps your baseline up and running. We give you manuals, so if Ed's out and about and he wants to change the roadways, he can do that. It's pretty much, our idea is we want to give it to the town. We want them to use it and be comfortable with it. That's kind of been the basis of how we designed our program. All the reports and the functionality come from the users that use the program. So we have, we have user group meetings where people kind of grow me and tell me what's wrong with the program, but it's helpful, because ultimately, we have a, we have a really good product.
You have a question?
Oh, I want to, Paul, and I'll ask.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, and this isn't any criticism of that, but the only, from our end, the water department, the water superintendent, when you reclaim a road, as you can see, when you go through other towns following mill roads, they can go around catch basins and water gates. When they reclaim a road, unless we can lower the water gates enough, they'll go over them. But if we can't, we have to take, literally dig down, take the tops off the gates, take measurements where they are, after they're done, grating the road and rolling it. Now it's all packed. We have to go back in there and dig a hole, like, three feet in diameter, go put the gate top back on, and when you're packing it in, we can use jumping jacks and all kinds of things, but if we don't get it packed enough, once the hot top is on, then traffic's, now you get these dips where the, where the water gates are, I mean, just from my point of view. I mean, there are roads that need to be reclaimed that don't have town water, but, just from my point of view. Unfortunately, a lot of the water gates are in the middle of the road, in the land traffic.
It's a challenge.
It is a challenge. Same with the basins, same thing that's on the side of the road, they have to lower, and then we come out and bring them back up so they don't get, so the machine doesn't get ruined, or they ruin, you know, his sleeves, which now requires him to dig everything out to get down to remove that sleeve. So that's, you know, thank goodness we're not a community that is, our water, every road, that a lot of our roads that were reclaimed aren't necessarily have water on them. You know, it is unfortunate, but that's part of, you know, I think, doing a road. I mean, you can, you can mill a road, but if it requires, you know, the reclamation, you're wasting your money to mill it and then put another inch and a half back on because you haven't taken care of the problem on that remaining three or whatever inches of asphalt you have left. That's all cracked, too, and reflective cracking doesn't take long to come back to asphalt.
And I got to attest to, to a good base, I think in the 35 years I've been here, we've done Dudley Road, four times reclaimed it, and it's just, every few meetings, every few years, it just...
That's another one. You know, it's, and no matter who you've talked to, it's drainage, 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 drainage. You know, in towns that have country drainage... You know, in towns that have country drainage, it's just, you know, it's difficult to get the water off the road, and you can drive down the road after it's rained and see, see puddles, you know, where they sit, and, you know, you, we try to, you know, see if we can't figure those out, just before we're going to grade a road out, to try to get them, to keep the puddles from getting on the road, but without, you know, somebody going out there with survey markers every 50 feet to make sure the road is at a point, because you're dealing with heavy equipment, and saying, yeah, this is the area that's a little low, he's got nothing, you know, nothing to go by than us telling him it's a low spot, and needs to be brought up a little bit. And, and all the companies we work with that do reclamation have done a great job, so, again, it's just the problems we have with, with water, like most communities that have, you know, the car paths that we used, are now used as roads.
Well, I have one other question, you have something that says the top 10 roadways.
Yep.
So, would you typically, going forward, let's say that we solve, it's part of the money problem, you, you automatically know what your priorities would be?
Yes, I mean, we look at roads, too, that are-
So, it's pretty objective in terms of how they appear, right?
That's, that's the idea, we, we, we look at the, we look, the program, let's say, the program gives us advice. I always look at it, it's, it's a planning tool, it's suggestions, it's not telling you, go out and do this. So, the program gives you input, local knowledge plays a huge aspect of it, too, you know, it's like, I don't live in Townsend, I just know what the roads look like, Ed's the guy, he knows what's going on, so it's local knowledge combined with what the program has to come up with your, with your priorities.
So, for example, you think about it maybe in terms of, well, they might be on the top 10, but one has higher traffic than the other one.
Oh, without a doubt.
And that's how the, that's how the top 10 is generated, so ADT would, would be your average daily traffic total, and your roadway functional classification, so you have roads that are locals, you have roads that are collectors, and roads that are arterials. So, an arterial should have higher traffic, so it should rate higher than, let's say, a cul-de-sac or a dead end.
I mean, I think, I think that it's, I think it's nice having a prioritization method that's objective, because that's explainable to the public, you know, and, and, and we get out of, you know, people pressuring other people and, and that kind of thing.
Takes the bias out.
Yeah, it does, it takes, it takes that out of it.
And one thing that I'm very happy about is that Fitchburg Road is in the top, the top three, because I-
You called it, did you?
No, no, the reason being is that because, you know, for the purposes, not just for the roadways, but for the, the beautification of the town and for it to look nice, we're going to have this beautiful new fire station right in the center of town, and the road's all torn up in front of it. So, if, I'm glad that it's one of the top priority roads, because it's highly traveled, and it'll just make the center of Townsend look nicer.
So, we get a bonus from that one when we do it, huh? Any other questions? Okay, it's a beginning.
It's a start.
It's a start, that's right. I think, like I said, having the objectivity added into it is really important.
It's just, it's, it's numbers, and, you know, nothing that we just-
Do you have an electronic copy of this?
Yes.
Can you send it to Andy?
No problem.
Anne, do you want this?
Yeah, if you got one.
You can have mine, I'm, I'm going to get an electronic copy.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, that's what, that's what I was thinking, you know, it, it depends on, you know, who's, who's got pull and who's, and it shouldn't be that way. There, there shouldn't be any favoritism in terms of who gets what.
Oh, that's the toughest part, like I said, we do this in a lot of different communities, and as much as you try to take the politics out of it, some, sometimes they're still there, but I think your point is great, it's, you know, a third party coming in to look at it, and it, and it does make it objective.
Yep, I like it, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you for the extension, Colleen.
You're welcome, least we could do.
Give me a couple of minutes to-
It goes down a quick and then it goes up.
Do you want to go on to 2.2, Ed?
Oh, sure.
That's the mailbox policy?
Sure, probably more difficult than the road.
Do you want to copy it? Do you have it memorized?
Uh, I kind of have it memorized.
Want to talk to it?
Uh, I, it's, it's, you know, it's a suggestion, I don't know if there's a right or a wrong, are we at fault sometimes for hitting a mailbox, well, probably, but not purposely? It's in the process of either pushing snow off the road or pushing snow back from the road, the edge of the road, so we can plow more in, like, like this winter, which required us to do that, you know, the whole month of February, in order to make room to plow more snow, because once, once a bank gets so high, a snowplow cannot push it any high, over, over a snowbank, so if we get a four-foot curl on a plow, once a snowbank gets to four feet, what's going to happen is the road gets narrower. And, you know, so, we go out there with wings, and when you get four feet of snow, it's tough to see everything, mailboxes, you know, what do they say, 28 inches for mailperson, something in that vicinity, so they can have, just put it out, you know, if they don't clean it out, or you have something showing us not to see. We had, if, if you went out with a plow driver, he's, you know, he's winging back a, a road, not only is he looking for cars that are coming his way, he's trying to look at a tip of a wing plow through a window that's this big in his door, and then he's trying to gauge where he thinks everything is up in the road, so he's got to look at three or four different places while he's doing it. And it's not easy, I think, one of our, the person that might have driven with Keith Laterno can attest to that, how difficult it is to, to do that kind of work, and, you know, are we at fault? In a sense, yes, we probably did hit some.
So, what's the solution?
You know, I, there are communities who do, put up mailboxes, and all they do is give them the standard aluminum mailbox with four-by-four posts, you know, a lot of them don't care if you put up granite, if you paid $500 for a mailbox, you know, it's, it's at a point where you've got to say to the residents, it's, you know, they are on top property, and you live in New England, you've got to expect that something like this could happen, yeah.
So, do we have a budget for something like this, were we to do it?
No.
No?
We don't, I mean, that's part of the, part of the problem is, you know, where would it come from, and how much do you put in? You know, it's a real-
Yeah, because it's kind of a guessing game.
It is, yeah.
It's going to happen, Colin.
Well, and the, I mean, the reason, you know, I even brought this up is because you have to have it, there's no, it's in the right-of-way, but you can't, there's no way of avoiding putting it, putting a mailbox in the right-of-way, because, yeah, it has to be close to the road, and, you know, but then, you know, the town rules say that you can't have, you know, anything that's in the right-of-way is not the town's responsibility, but then the, the post office rules say it has to be close to, it has to be within that right-of-way, so I did notice, reading this, Ed, that it does, because a lot of the damage that I've noticed and I've heard about is from the weight of the snow.
Yes.
Which not, towns generally don't cover.
Right.
So, it's only if the plow actually hits the mailbox.
And that's, that's a tough thing, I mean, unless you see paint on a mailbox, you know, try picking up a load of even, even light snow on a, on a shovel, how heavy that stuff, that is. Now, take an 11-foot plow blade, and take it eight feet, and push all that snow against the mailbox, it'll, it'll crunch, you know, crush your mailbox. My issue is, you know, we have to go out there and look at them and say, yeah, no, this, this one could be because of the weight of the snow, it's my opinion. They're going to say, well, no, I think the plow hit it, you know, it's going to be a he said, she said, and it's going to come down to me saying, okay, we'll file a claim.
How does it, how do the other towns deal with this?
They budget for it.
No, no, but I mean, how does-
Determine fault.
Yeah, I mean, how, how do they determine fault?
Just like I said, they go out and-
So, in, in practice, it hardly ever, people hardly ever get reimbursed for it, then?
Probably not, I mean, I've been here for 16 years, and we've never reimbursed.
Well, but what about the towns that do reimburse for it?
They usually set a limit, most are $50, that I've seen, there was one in a Ritzyer community that was $100, but-
But how often are they actually paying that out?
I, I, you know, I was just going online, looking for policies, I wasn't really-
So, I, I have another question, when this came up the last time, someone said that if the post office requires you to have the multiple mailbox posts, like Timberly Park does, and, and that was a requirement, that the post office actually has to reimburse for those, have you heard that?
I haven't heard anything like that, no.
Of course, going after.
Did you just send everyone in town after the post office?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, it's kind of like worse than fighting City Hall, I think.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you're talking about a pretty big organization for things to get lost in. I mean, all right, so, let's say we are at fault, and we, you know, or we think we're at fault, and it looks like we are, the reality is, we don't have any money right now, so is this something we'd start budgeting for next year, or ask town meeting what they think of something like this? Andy?
Yeah, I think the, I think the hard part is, even if you have money budgeted, it becomes the whole fault issue, you know, and, and even, you know, even now, if, if, you know, if we got a call from a, a resident, and, and they said, you know, the plow, he actually, the guy actually hit it with the blade, and-
I saw him, and I have it on camera.
And, yeah, we had actual proof, or there was paint on the mailbox or something like that, or, you know, and a cul-de-sac driver was backing up, backed into it, something like that, I'd say, well, go ahead, replace it, we, you know, we sort of own that, we have that responsibility. It becomes much more difficult where it's the weight, because most of these are the weight of the snow, it's not the plow itself, it's the weight of the snow. It becomes much more difficult to manage and to, you know, to sort of judge evenly.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm terribly curious to know that, you know, if we asked the town, you know, town meeting, what do you guys think about us putting some money aside for mailbox damage fund? And, you know, would you be willing to appropriate-
Mailbox Relief Association.
Yeah. Would you be willing to do that? There, there are quite a few people that I know that would say, you live in New England, you know?
Yeah.
But, but I would be kind of curious to know that.
The other thing we could do, though, is that, since you already have a policy in place for damage to people's property, that's beyond, don't you have a policy that's beyond the right-of-way? Thought we had talked about that last time.
We don't have, and, and that's no nice policy that's on, on the town line, it's, we don't, we're not responsible for anything within the town right-of-way.
No, but what if it's beyond the right-of-way?
Then, if, if, if we actually went eight feet off the road, then I would say, yes, we're definitely responsible.
Right.
Most right-of-ways are 40 feet, and if you take 24 feet off of that for the pavement, we actually own about eight feet, give or take, on each side of the road, so a truck would literally have to be driving off the road to hit something, that, you know, I mean, you know, we had a mailbox in question, I showed it to Andy, and, you know, it, it did, I mean, she said she saw the first, the person hit it, and I took a picture of it, and it was a little crumpled in the bottom corner, and she wanted to replace, have it replaced, and so we can file a claim, well, the mailbox is $142, it was a copper mailbox. So, you, you know, now we could decide, well, where do we stop? You know, we're going to say, we're just getting you, like most communities, all they do is get an aluminum mailbox, the cheapest one you can find, that's what we're putting back.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem giving that person a minimum amount, and if they want, enough to cover a plain mailbox, and if they want to kick in the rest of it to get their copper mailbox, more power to them, you know, as they just, you know, cut them a check for that, but, again, I get back to the-
Right.
-problem that we don't have-
Right.
-any funds put aside for this.
Yeah. The other thing, obviously, this is a hard, a hard year, and, you know, probably more damage, I had damage to my mailbox this year, not that it didn't get knocked over, it actually got crushed by the weight of the snow. Still in the post, the post is still there, but the whole, the whole box has sagged around the support. So, you know, to, you, you don't, you don't want to have a knee-jerk reaction to a bad, particularly bad winter, so maybe it's something that we, we revisit as we're putting together the, the warrant for the fall town meeting, throw a couple of thousand dollars into a, you know, from free cash into some fund, and see what town meeting says about it.
Yeah, I think that's-
That's what I was, I was going to suggest, though.
Oh, great.
Because it's nothing we're really, it's nothing we can implement now, because we don't have any money, and it would have to wait for the fall anyways.
And I'd love to hear what the town has to say about it.
Right, so we could just wait and see what they want to say and what they want to do.
How many mailboxes, on average, do you get a year, say, for the last three years?
Oh, we get numerous calls, especially in the spring.
20 during the year, or more?
It could, it probably, it could be somewhere 10 to 20.
Really?
Yeah, most of them are from where it isn't from us hitting.
Oh, yeah, no, I just-
Because that's, I agree with that, I mean, you know, unfortunately, the weight of the snow is the weight of the snow.
And then we've got, again, lawns, sprinklers, fences.
Yeah, but that, I'm not talking about those things.
No, I know, but-
But if you hit them, what's the difference, if you're hitting somebody's mailbox, or if you're hitting somebody's personal fence?
Because the mailbox has to be in the right-of-way, there's no way avoiding having it in the right-of-way.
But there are people who put stuff in our right-of-way not knowing, and we don't have any policies in place that say, you've got to come to Town Hall and get a permit to put a sprinkler system within four feet of the edge of pavement. I mean, we've got a gentleman who got hit twice, and his sprinkler head is right at the edge of the pavement, ponderosa, I think. He repaired it last year, we hit it again this year, not on purpose, you get a snowstorm in the, in the early fall, when the ground isn't frozen, and those plows, even if it gets, you know, you know, four or five inches off the road, it's going to tear it up, and it did, and, you know, so I'm debating, do we, you know, we fix it? We have two fences on Warren Road that are both within the right-of-way, one of them is, you know-
I mean, to me, you take a chances with an irrigation system, you know?
Right, and that's why, that's why I'm not talking about any of those things, I'm more talking about mailboxes, but as we're sitting in the sun in the summer, we can think about-
Okay.
-the following winter and the policy.
But, but Andy, I think it might be a good idea to just put something on, on the fall-
Mm-hmm.
-town meeting.
Okay.
See what folks think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Sue, while Ed's here, we have items 3.2 and 3.3 are both, I don't, I don't expect that there's any questions for, for Ed, but since he's here, maybe we take those two out of order and-
Sure. Let's jump down to 3.2. Review and approve winter recovery assistance program, RAP, funding request from Highway Superintendent Ed Kukla in the amount of $63,853 to reclaim 1,710 feet of Pierce Road.
And that is one road that, if he did his review in August, the road came apart this winter, it was unbelievable, the lower part from Ash to Warren, so we figured if we're going to do that section, there's money available.
Yeah, I go through there.
Go all the way through.
I can vote for that, that's-
My sister lives around the corner from there, so I-
Pretty bad.
Yeah, yeah, it definitely, probably, I think, if it's not in the top 10, it would be now.
Not now.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I move that we approve the winter recovery assistance program, RAP, funding request from Highway Superintendent Ed Kukla in the amount of $63,853 to reclaim 1,710 feet of Pierce Road.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
Three places.
If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.3, review and approve Chapter 90 funding request from Highway Superintendent Ed Kukla in the amount of $133.
I wish it was $133.
$133,000, wishful thinking.
Yes.
100, no, $133,177, I'm trying to make it lower, to reclaim 3,570 feet of Pierce Road.
Madam Chair, I move-
Good luck with that one, Colin.
I don't think I'll have as much of a problem as you did.
Try, try the old so moved.
Yeah.
So moved.
I move that we approve Chapter 90 funding request from Highway Superintendent Ed Kukla in the amount of $133,177 to reclaim 3,570 feet of Pierce Road.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three places.
We're doing three places here, right?
Yes. Do you want those, or do those go to Terry first?
No, you go to Terry first.
Thanks for all the hard work, Ed.
Thanks very much.
And thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the time. Have a good night.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, 3, 2, 3, 3 is done. 2, 1, 2, 2.
3, 1.
3.1. Report on complaints brought against public officers, employees, staff members, or individuals. You okay going forward with this, Mr. McNabb?
I am.
Okay. I have a statement to read, and then I, are you going to read the...
I'd like to read the findings into the record.
The findings, okay, all right. As Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I was referred a series of complaints regarding town employees by Town Council, who had received them from Selectman Carolyn Smart. On Town Council's advice, the Board conducted three executive session hearings and requested written reports from two town departments in order to assess what further action, if any, the Board of Selectmen should take in this regard. Ultimately, the Board is hereby closing its investigation into these complaints and finds no cause to further investigate or to take any disciplinary or other action against the employees. Town Council has further advised that where there is no disciplinary action called for, and that none of the records constitute personnel information, as that term has been interpreted by the Massachusetts courts, such records are not exempt from disclosure. Therefore, upon approval of the final report, the complaint and related documents become public information. Colin, do you want to read the report?
Yes. These are the findings of employee complaints submitted by Carolyn Smart. Town Council Brian Riley submitted to the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen several complaints he received from Selectman Carolyn Smart regarding employees in the Water Department, as well as the Animal Control Officer and Town Administrator. The complaints are attached to these findings. The Board conducted an initial review of said complaints in executive session on March 24, 2015. Selectman Smart recused herself from these proceedings, as well as all future executive sessions. Notices had been sent in accordance with the open meeting law to Department, to Town Administrator Andrew Sheehan, Water Superintendent Paul Rayfus, Water Department Office Administrator Brenda Boudreaux, and Animal Control Officer Mary Laterno, each of whom was in attendance. Ms. Boudreaux was also supported by Union Representative Jan Michael DeMayo. The Board heard responses to Selectman Smart's complaints from Mr. Rayfus, Ms. Boudreaux, and Ms. Laterno, and asked questions of said employees. The Board also asked questions of the Town Administrator regarding the complaints. At the conclusion of said hearing, the Board of Selectmen voted that there was no evidence of wrongdoing, illegal, or unethical conduct regarding the Town Administrator. While the Board of Selectmen similarly found no evidence of wrongdoing on the part of Mr. Rayfus or Ms. Boudreaux, the Board voted to refer complaints to the Board of Water Commissioners for hearing and requested a report within two weeks regarding complaints numbered 1, 2, 4, and 6. The Board determined that no action was needed regarding complaints 3 and 5. While the Board of Selectmen similarly found no evidence of wrongdoing on the part of Ms. Laterno, the Board voted to refer the complaint to Chief of Police Irving Marshall and requested a report within two weeks. The Board of Water Commissioners met an executive session on Friday, April 3, 2015, and then met in joint session, joint executive session with the Board of Selectmen on April 7, 2015. On April 7, the Board of Water Commissioners voted 2 to 1 to submit a written report dated April 3, 2015, to the Board of Selectmen in response to the complaints. The report offered explanations and information in response to complaints numbered 1, 2, 4, and 6. Following discussion, the Board of Selectmen voted to accept this report in resolution of these complaints, and no further action was necessary or desirable. The Board of Selectmen conducted a further executive session on April 14, 2015, which was attended by Ms. Laterno and Chief Marshall. Chief Marshall stated that he had received Selectman Smart's complaints in November 2014, and had followed up with Ms. Laterno changing some practices, but finding no cause for any disciplinary action. After discussion, the Board voted to accept Chief Marshall's written report dated April 7, 2014, in resolution of the complaints against Ms. Laterno. The Board of Selectmen, members Licio and McNabb, has therefore determined that no further action is required in response to these complaints. Based on the Board's own information, testimony of the subject employees, and reports and information from the heads of the Water Department and Police Department, the Board finds the facts alleged in the complaints were either inaccurate or involved issues or policies that were revised months before the complaints were submitted to Town Council. Even where such policies or practices were revised, the Board concluded that none of the allegations involved actions of the employees that were illegal, unethical, or inappropriate, and that in any event, no further action is called for at this time. The Board of Selectmen therefore considers these complaints to be finally resolved in a closed matter.
The Board regrets the time and expense this matter has taken, and expresses its sincere appreciation for the employees, department heads, and officials involved, and for their complete cooperation in assisting the Board of Selectmen in this regard. I will now entertain a motion to approve and sign the final report titled "Findings: Employee Complaints Submitted by Carolyn Smart," declaring that these complaints be finally resolved in a closed matter. Here's the, on the bottom.
Is that the motion?
Yep.
Madam Chair, may I say something before we, I make the motion?
You may, but I don't want us to discuss any more of...
None, it's not, it's simply, I, obviously, in leading up to this, we had to speak to Town Council, and I asked for the amount of money that this has cost the town of Townsend. The bill is nearly $6,000 on these unfounded accusations. I make a motion to approve and sign the final report titled "Findings: Employee Complaints Submitted by Carolyn Smart," declaring that these complaints be finally resolved in a closed matter.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Matter is closed.
Sue, could I just, I know you don't want to dwell on this, could I just read a brief statement in this regard?
Okay, as long as, like I said, we're not rehashing anything that we've already talked about.
It is really in the form of a, of a thank you to the, to the two of you. I'd like to express my appreciation to the Board of Selectmen for its treatment of allegations of wrongdoing that were made against several employees and me. Specifically, I'm grateful to Sue Lizio and Colin McNabb, who oversaw the investigation into the allegations. I'm equally grateful to Town Council Brian Riley. The investigation was thorough, fair, and expeditious. The allegations included multiple counts of wrongdoing, including stealing, embezzling, falsifying account information, crime and corruption, misappropriation of public funds, compromising the public trust, and engaging in a cover-up. The investigation determined that all of the allegations were unfounded. Unfortunately, the damage to the town and the accused employees cannot be undone. The town cannot recover the lost time, effort, and funds expended in defending the employees against the unfounded allegations, nor can it recover the costs for Town Council to investigate the allegations, attend numerous meetings, and prepare the final report. Likewise, the employees cannot undo the allegations despite the fact that all were fully exonerated. I'm grateful for the way in which Sue and Colin executed the investigation, I'm grateful but not surprised that all the employees were exonerated, and I hope that such a damaging episode is never repeated.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
3.4.
3.4. Continue review and discussions of the May 5, 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Andy?
Not a whole heck of a lot to, to continue to talk about on, on the town meeting, we went through it pretty well last week. I'm working on the motions, and I went through them based on the conversation that we had last week, we'll be passing over a number of the articles, putting them off till the fall. One, pages 6 and 7, Articles 26 and 27, that has to do with the West Townsend Fire Station. And, question has come up that we haven't, well, it came up a while ago, but we, we haven't talked about it in any great detail, and that is how we fund this, this purchase. We're looking at a approximately million to a million 100,000, in that ballpark. We did talk to our financial advisors about this, we could bond it as long as 30 years if we wanted to. We asked them for, for debt service information for a million-dollar borrowing, spread over 20 years or over 30 years, for, for a million-dollar bond over 30 years, depending on how it's structured, you could pay almost $700,000 in interest, on top of the million dollars in principal, so...
For how long?
For 30 years. That's a heck of a lot of interest, and not real anxious to, to incur that, that kind of interest, and it, and it doesn't save us all that much, really, in the, in the, in the annual debt service payments, the difference of $10,000 to $12,000 for the most part. If we do a 20-year borrow, we'll be, depending on how it's structured, would be between $300,000 and $400,000 in interest on top of the million-dollar principal. Still a lot. We do have some debt coming off in a couple of years, so our, our debt picture will look different in a couple of years than it looks now, but the, really, the question comes down to, do we want to try to do this within the confines of Proposition 2 and 1/2, within, and fund the debt service within the levy, or do you want to do a debt exclusion?
What would it raise the, do you have figured out how much it would raise taxes for the average?
And how long?
Yeah, how long? Can we do 100 years?
Well, if you did, it, it would be either 20 or 30.
But you wouldn't be paying the interest. Yeah, you would.
You would be.
You would, because you're still borrowing.
Yeah.
That's right, okay.
I wrote it down, and I, and I didn't bring it with me tonight. It's around 20 cents per thousand for...
What's the average, is it 2.30, is the average assessed value in Townsend?
215, something like that.
It's close to 2.30, I think it's a little under, a little under 2.30. So, is it $40?
You said 2.40?
Yeah, a little less, 2.30, I think, but...
It's $48.
$48.
A year.
A year.
A year. So, in a way, it's, it's cleaner to do it now, to make it, to make it a contingent appropriation, but that forces us to have a special town meeting between now and, I think it's September 15. The alternative is, we could, we could present it without the debt exclusion piece. Nothing prevents you from coming back at the annual election next year, or at some other subsequent election, and putting it on. It probably affects your chances a little bit, but I'm also a little concerned, well, we haven't really had that sort of public conversation about it as a debt exclusion, but throwing it out there now.
Can you explain for the benefit of the public what the difference is?
Yeah, so...
A straight borrowing versus a debt exclusion?
Right, so if we do, if we do a straight borrowing, the property tax levy will more than likely continue to increase by 2 and 1/2 percent per year, cannot go higher than that. If we did a debt exclusion, we would presumably do the normal 2 and 1/2 percent, plus whatever additional fraction of a percentage would be needed to cover this, the debt service on just this project. So, the, the bottom line is that, is that the tax levy goes up more than the 2 and 1/2 percent that's allowed under the law.
With...
For the duration of the borrowing, so for that 20-year period or 3-year period, whatever we decide.
What's, I mean, how, how do you say that to the folks at town meeting, so that they can make a decision? I mean, what's your recommendation? What would you do? Not to put you on the spot, Andy.
No.
But I am.
It's okay. I think my, my preference would be to go forward without a debt exclusion, we've done one recently for the high school, and, and with, with some debt coming off in fiscal 18, we'll be freeing up enough that we should be able to fit this within the levy, and, and not see an increase in our total debt service. Our debt service has been declining.
It's going to jump up again when the...
It's going to jump.
When the school comes on board.
Correct, yeah. So, we, you know, for the last few years, it's been declining, I don't expect any significant change in that, this will, this will stop the decline to some degree, or slow the decline. But where we, where we haven't had a lot of opportunity to talk about this as a debt exclusion project, I'm a little worried about bringing it forward now. And, and there's also nothing that would prevent somebody at town meeting from saying, let's debt exclude it, and amend the motion, so... And again, it doesn't, it doesn't tie your hands from coming back at some future point and saying, after further analysis, we think we're better off doing a debt exclusion.
Yeah, if it becomes too much of a burden.
Okay.
I'm okay with...
I'm okay with that.
Believe in it without the debt exclusion for now.
And I, I don't like bringing it at the 11th hour like this, it's not a, it's not a decision that should be made lightly, but, but I think it's an important conversation to have that...
Sue?
Yes.
Well, the fact of the matter is, we have to, we have to do something. One, you know, brisk wind is going to knock the West Station over. You know, and I, it's, you know, there's equipment in there that's expensive, and we want to protect it, and we want to have something that's, you know, is going to be, is going to fit the needs of West Townsend, and unfortunately, the old West Station, Station doesn't fit the needs of the town anymore.
Yeah, and we've got apparatus that, that doesn't fit in that building anymore.
Yeah, I know that they once, they had to expand the doors once already, they had to increase the height of them.
I think they've gone in both directions, I think they widened them at some point quite a number of years ago, and then I think they raised the whole building up at another point in time, as the, as the equipment, the apparatus has gotten wider and taller, but it's to the point now where there's, they're out of options over there, so, you know, 100 and, 140 years out of that building, that's not so bad. You amortize that over, over what they, what it cost, it probably cost $3,000 in 1875 to build that building, so...
Well, the, I have a question, though, Sue, about regarding this project, will the fire chief been doing a PowerPoint or a presentation or anything for town meeting?
Yes, they are, they are going to be doing a presentation.
Anything else on the warrant?
I think that's it for, for town meeting, like I said, I'm putting together... Like I said, I'm putting together the motions. There's going to be a whole bunch that take no action because we're pushing off to the fall, but...
What about border health? Remember, there was an Article Four, extra stuff?
Yeah, so I don't know where they are in the review of the proposals for curbside collection. I did have some correspondence back and forth late last week about it. And I think I explained where we are and that we're looking at providing funding that will allow them to continue level service. And anything above level service, whatever it is, whether it's toters for recycling or toters for trash, weekly recycling, bulk pickups, white good pickups, things like that, any of that above and beyond what we already offer would be the subject of, I think it's Article 23, the supplemental appropriation.
But you have not heard from them yet?
I have not.
When, how long do they have to figure that out and tell us what that might be?
Less than two weeks.
Okay.
Town meeting's two weeks from tonight, so we hopefully would have a quorum by this time and would be well on our way into the night. So I would need to know by, ideally by the end of next week, but, you know...
So the amount that was in the budget, because we lowered that amount.
Correct.
My understanding was, we lowered it to an amount comparable to what we're running at.
Correct.
For level services.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Because all of the other departments were given instruction to, for a budget for level services. Is that correct?
Actually, level fund.
Level fund.
Yeah, level fund. So in the current fiscal year...
So what would level fund for border health be?
Level fund is 629,000. That's what's budgeted in fiscal fifteen. Board of Health asked for 644,000. But as we came to understand that better, that was for, that was building in additional costs for additional, building in costs for additional service.
Okay.
So then, in the exercise that I went through over the last couple of weeks to close the budget deficit, we looked at the way that the solid waste budget is trending. It looks like they're going to come in under the 629 that's budgeted. It's been declining for, tonnage has been declining for a number of years. We're seeing it continue this year to decline, especially the second half of the year since they went to the two-barrel limit. And Carla Walter also tells me that there are fewer and fewer violations being issued.
Right, which is what you explained last week as well.
Yeah, so I think 619 is a fair amount to budget for level services.
I'm assuming that the FinCom has not heard anything that we haven't heard? Okay. Perhaps a memo to them to remind them of what the timeline is on that article?
Okay.
All set on this?
Yeah, I think so.
Colin, do you have any other questions on it?
No.
Three five, continue review and discussion of the FY16 operating budget.
Any capital budget?
Oh, we did, operating first.
Three six.
Yep, capital budget.
No, three five.
Didn't we just?
No.
We just did three four.
We did three four. We did the annual town meeting warrant.
We kind of bled into the budget.
Oh, I'm like, I'm confused.
It's hard because the three all, they all sort of work together.
Especially where border health is concerned.
Listen, I put this in my done pile.
I'm done it.
Okay.
I'm done it.
Undo, undo.
Okay, so we're looking at the budget worksheet.
Yeah, so, and not to further confuse things, but I also, in the package in front of you tonight, I put another copy of this appropriation, sort of master spreadsheet. It's helpful for me...
Where everything's coming from?
Yeah, it's helpful for me to see where everything is going and coming from. It has not changed from last week, so... And the budget that I printed out for you tonight has not changed from what I emailed out over the weekend. However, there are a couple of things that I do want to bring to your attention. On the second page in Treasury, about halfway through that department, there's a line, 011455300, professional services intermunicipal agreement, and funded for $8,300. Andrea Wood brought this to my attention today. Andrea's always great about going through the budget with a fine-tooth comb. And she never fails to find a few things. And we, you know, it's one of those things, it's kind of like editing your own writing. You look at it enough and you just start missing things.
You don't see it after a while.
You don't see it. And I don't know how many times I looked at the Treasury budget and glossed right over this one. We had put this in a year ago when we were trying to arrange for an intermunicipal agreement with Ashby for Treasury services, similar to what we had with Dunstable for accounting services. And so we put it in there, we weren't, it was something that came up right around town meeting, so we sort of threw it in there. And as it turned out, Ashby, we couldn't come to an agreement with Ashby. Kind of became forgotten, funding in there. But Andrea noticed it and said, "Hey, we don't have any municipal agreement, intermunicipal agreement. We can get rid of that." So that's an $8,300 savings.
So this is coming off of here.
So that'll come off, that'll go from $8,300 to zero.
How does that change the bottom line? By $8,300?
By $8,300. And then, we also caught a couple of small omissions where I didn't factor in a two and a half, a two and a half percent increase. So I made that, I made a couple of changes. Those are, you know, on the order of three or $400 apiece, so it's small, it's a small change. If you go to Department 01524, landfill engineering, it's like the fourth to the last page.
Can we get page numbers?
It's right above Consul on Aging. So we have that in for $20,400. When I was going through the budget over the weekend, that jumped out at me. There was, there were two numbers on the information that was given to me by the department, so I checked into it today. That should actually be $15,500. So there's a savings of $4,900 there. There was, I forget where it was and I forget what the amount was, but I did also find an error in one of the formulas, which I think offsets most of the good news that I've given you over the last five minutes. So that's the bad news. So, but, so it brings us to a bottom line number of $19,197,625.
So is that the corrected total?
That's the corrected total.
After all of the things that you just pointed out?
$19,197,625. So what I'm working on now is, this is not what goes to town meeting. We have a more condensed version that goes to town meeting. So putting that together now, so this form is going to sort of go away. We'll rely on that town meeting format, which is shorter. I think it does have page numbers, too, so...
So we're a little bit to the good now?
We're a little bit, yeah, I don't remember what we had last week. We're about where we were. We're not a heck of a lot better or worse than we were. And again, I forget what the error in the formula amounted to. But it's pretty much a wash, so... So there'll be some modest changes. We round everything up from this point forward. And so there'll be a couple of dollars here and a couple of dollars there. In terms of where this brings us or what the budget looks like compared to fiscal fifteen, it's an increase of 690, call it $697,000 over this year's budget. That's an increase of 3.66%. Of that, $612,000 is to North Middlesex Regional. So that's 88% of the increase. It's offset a little bit by the decrease in the show of attack. So overall, education is absorbing 79% of the increase. So 547,000 of that 697,000. However, it's important, again, to point out what I mentioned in the last couple of meetings. The North Middlesex budget only went up to, just under two and a half percent. It's the state funding formula and that's what took a two and a half percent budget increase and increased our assessment by 6.8%, I think it was, so... And then on the municipal side, municipal budget is going up a little over $149,000, which is only 21% of that total increase overall, so...
And what, where are we at with the state aid? I mean, you and I talked to Sheila today, at Harrington.
Right, so we've got the budget, the governor's budget. We've got the House Ways and Means budget. They're pretty close in terms of local aid. And I think at this point, it's pretty unlikely that it's going to change substantially. I'm not worried about it going backwards. I'm not worried about a decrease. But I'm also not optimistic that, you know, we're going to open up the newspaper some morning and see another $100,000 in local aid coming to town, so...
But they have restored some circuit breaker for the school.
Yes.
Transportation.
Transportation money, maybe some, yeah, the special ed circuit breaker. So what that means is, because it's happening late in the budget cycle, it's really not going to help us this year. What it ends up doing is, and the same thing happened a couple of years ago, we'll actually get billed a lesser amount from North Middlesex, probably, if things go the way that it looks like they're going. So at the end of fiscal sixteen, when we're doing, when we're closing the books in the summer of next year, we'll have spent less on education than we budgeted. So that'll come back to us as free cash in the fall of 2016. Also related to our meeting with Representative Harrington, it appears that there is some movement, some interest in some changes down the road. And again, nothing that's going to help us in sixteen, but maybe things that might be in place for seventeen.
Oh, right, we talked about the foundation budget and the formulas.
The big thing. And I think if the state can get its budget picture squared away, get rid of the short-term deficit that it has, improve its structural budget, then I think the future is somewhat brighter in terms of local aid. We're still, I know, I say it every opportunity I have, we're still about $450,000 below where we were in fiscal '09.
You did a good job of repeating that, actually.
Yeah, you can ask family members, I'm good at repeating old stories. So it would be nice to have that back and it'll take a while to get there, but I think I'm somewhat optimistic that we'll see some progress in the coming years.
Okay, thank you. You're all set with all that, Colin?
I think that's all I need to say on that, yeah.
That was three five, three six, capital budget.
No changes from last week.
Sue, I called a meeting for the Capital Planning Committee. We'll be reviewing this and voting whether to approve or not. It's essentially what the Capital Planning Committee prioritized. I think there's a few, Andy, a few minor changes, but nothing, I mean, our top priorities...
Pretty much in line.
Yeah. But, you know, nothing, you know, it's got, I mean, police, I think, is there cruisers on here?
Cruisers are in the operating budget.
They're in the operating, but we usually put it on the, we show it on the spreadsheet when we go to town meeting, because they're technically in the capital plan, even though, just like water's technically in the capital plan, even though they have an alternative funding source.
The way they use them, I call them disposables, but...
Right. Well, that's an argument that...
No offense to the...
That's an argument that we'll have next year.
Yeah, but, I mean, they really...
Because I've always been...
They depreciate pretty fast.
Because the Capital Planning bylaw says that it's, there's two criteria, over $10,000 and last five years. Frontline cruisers don't last five years.
That's my point.
So that's the thing that we're...
Andy?
Just to that point, I've been working on updating our financial management policies. And that's one of the things, you know, we kind of come to agreements, sort of gentleman's agreements from time to time on things like cruisers or technology and things like that. One of the things I want to build into the policies is an acknowledgement that cruisers and technology upgrades, especially hardware, are like laptops, are not capital items, so that we can sort of dispense with this once and for all and just say, "Go."
Okay.
And be merry.
So we all set on three six?
Yes.
As of Thursday, we'll be discussing it and then voting on whether or not to approve.
Three seven, review and approve one-day special liquor license for Terry Roy.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the one-day special liquor license for Terry Roy, VFW Post 6538 for a thirtieth birthday party on May 16, 2015, from 8:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three eight, review and approve one-day special liquor license for Terry Roy.
Madam Chair, I vote that we approve the one-day special liquor license for Terry Roy, VFW Post 6538 for a retirement party on June 6, 2015, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three nine, review and approve one-day special liquor license for Terry Roy.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the one-day special liquor license for Terry Roy, VFW Post 6538 for a college graduation on June 13, 2015, from 7:00 to 11:00 a.m.
I was just going to say...
From seven, that's, wow, that's an early, that's an early drinking party. Madam Chair, may I amend my motion?
Yes, please do.
To 7:00 to 11:00 p.m.
The town function.
Sounds better. I'll second the change in that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three ten, review and approve change order for the Water Department.
Paul's here if you have any questions on this one.
Is this the SCADA thing again? Paul, you want to talk on it?
Just briefly. It's more, yeah, more, with this type of thing, there's a possibility of more change orders, hopefully not more coming down the road. But this type of project where not every component of the system can be foreseen and as you go along, you find things that you can add to the implementation, so hence the number of change orders you've received in the last few weeks.
And the, I don't know if I gave you the...
The amount.
Oh, the amount on this one is $1,922.59.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the change order for the Water Department.
For one...
For $1,922.59.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No .5, yeah. .5 cents, huh?
Said all of us are just Sue.
Thanks.
All of you, actually, all of you.
Did I get all of those on the liquor license? Did I get all of those on the, the liquor license? I don't know if I missed a second page, Andy, could you just-
I think you did.
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you. 3-11, wanna do appointments first?
You wanna skip over 3-11? I haven't, I haven't, um, given it any further thought since we last met on it, so I don't-
I have to be honest, I haven't either.
So, I'm happy kicking it off.
Do you wanna pass over it, Colin?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. Again, like I've said, it's just been a discussion, so. There's nothing pressing.
Appointments of personnel officials.
Ann?
Sorry, I was dropping that big packet for effect.
Yeah, where?
The microphone.
Yeah.
Board of Service.
Copy pen.
Yeah. Right underneath my name. Oh, wait, who signed that top?
Somebody signed in the, I think one of the Water Commission has signed in the wrong spot.
I'll sign with it, how's that?
Grand, sounds grand. Alrighty, would you like me to move forward with the appointments?
Sure. I can multitask.
4.1, um, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the request of the Planning Board to appoint Perry Tomasetti as their representative to the Towns and Properties Committee.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
4-2, Madam Chair, I re, I vote that we, I move that we, oh, I'm having speaking problems. I move that we approve the request of the Conservation Commission to appoint Christine Vitale as their representative to the Town Properties Committee.
Thought we did this one.
No, we appointed her to the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-3, review and approve special municipal employee designations for the alternate wiring inspector, alternate gas inspector, and alternate plumbing inspector. I do have a question on this.
Sure.
I mean, is, is this amount going to be within, I mean, we didn't set a ceiling, but, you know, but Mr. Hanks had given us kind of a ballpark.
Right.
So, am I to assume that it's within that ballpark?
Yes.
Okay.
It better. It better be within that ballpark.
Yeah, well, I, that it's not incremental.
Correct.
That it's, okay, because they're, they kinda substitute for them, right?
Yeah, this is, this is really gonna be just when the other guys are on vacation and they're unable to-
Just filling in, okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the special municipal employee designation for the alternate wire inspector, alternate gas inspector, and alternate plumbing inspector.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, Madam Chair?
Oh, sorry. Is the board meeting next week? And I'm not, we've, I think we've met, Jody and I were talking earlier, I think we've met seven weeks in a row. I'm not necessarily looking to-
I would love to have a Tuesday night off.
Sounds good. Get Tuesday off.
So, our next meeting will be the night of town meeting.
Okay, that's what normally it is anyways, so.
Madam Chair, I move that we review and sign the payroll and bills payable warrants out of session.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn at 7:37 PM.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.